For June 12th to order, would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll read the description, "The laws governing Board of Education require that their work be done where the public can observe their actions." Please remember that this is a board's meeting for the public to observe. Others may participate only with approval of the board. There is a visitor's guest list, hopefully you've all signed it, and I'm asking for approval for the May 8 budget committee meeting and regular board meeting.
I move to approve the May 8, 2023 budget committee meeting and regular board meeting.
A nice second.
The movement seconded to approve the May 8 regular board meeting and budget committee meeting, all those in favor, six or five, I say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 close same sign. Motion carries. Brian has agenda, Mr. Grill.
Straight down the line, I think we're ready to go.
Perfect. You're up then, Mr. Grill.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the last school board meeting of the school year. We'll stop board meetings July and August, of course. But this is kind of the wrap-up meeting for lots of staff, and they'll be heading off in the summer, either after over the weekend or on Tuesday, wrapping up their contracts, so appreciate that. Really, just a couple of things tonight. One, probably the thing that probably has kept myself, it's Scott, a number of nights here over the last couple of weeks, it's the legislative situation. Waiting to see if both sides can actually find a moment to get together and figure out how to work together. The problem is that the Senate is not in session. Both bills, particularly bills for budgeting, need to pass both the houses to get to the governor's desk. Without one of the groups showing up, there's no bills being passed. So that poses a problem to the point that Department of Ed started having conversations with the Department of Administrative Services about what happens if the legislature doesn't pass any bills. The reality is that we go back to the 9.3, 9.4 billion that we've been operating under this year. And the other problem we have, Scott, I'm sure will allude to it, is that we get a certain number of payments at certain times during the year. The first part of the fall, this situation causes us to get far fewer payments. So we'll be operating in the fall, assuming there's no resolution, with a lot less cash that's supposed to come our way. Eventually, if they get everything passed, and they're supposed to give us the 9.9 or the 10.2, depending on what they agree on, they will end up getting us our money at some point, but in the meantime, we're without that cash forward. So we're hoping that, you know, cooler heads prevail. We're hoping that both parties figure out how to do that. In the meantime, we are waiting to see how much money we're actually going to get. So that makes budgeting and decision-making very difficult. I've mentioned to you before that financially, we're in really very good shape, but without payments coming in, that goes away pretty quickly. So we'll have to watch and wait and see. I mentioned that it could change tomorrow. They could agree to come back and solve the problem. Hopefully, they will do that, and that's the case. The other piece of it for me is the science rooms are ready to go. Sorry, excuse me. Should be ready by the middle of November, right outside this building. We are excited about it. Two of them will be full-fledged, brand state-of-the-art new science rooms. And the two will be lecture rooms, and that you could eventually remodel the science rooms with a little bit of assistance. So just really excited about that. Tom Lovell was on it, working with our maintenance guys. I see one of our maintenance guys is here tonight, done a great, fantastic job, making sure that we're ready to go with that. And we look forward to getting that done. The other thing that will happen this summer is the playground that will happen at Offensio. There is, there is some digging happening this week. It already happened. Nice, digging's already happening. So we'll see a brand-new, all-purpose, all-user-friendly playground by the fall. Any questions?
One question.
Yeah.
The science classrooms, you said they'll be modified, will they already be plumbed and everything, so that there's not all that to do?
Yes, absolutely. So what we're running into is some of the cost of putting all the beds, all the sinks and everything else. It's far more expensive of putting in the ones that we put in at COVID, that were just regular classrooms. They're expensive enough, but these are expensive. So, you know, again, we were able to use our Esser funds for those classrooms, so we're a little excited about it. That's all we got.
Anybody else? So at this time, I would like to thank Mr. Grill and Mr. Rasmussen and all the people that put on such a fabulous graduation every night. It was just a perfect night, a perfect graduation, and everybody worked really hard. You people all worked really hard to get 145, 155 students across that stage from kindergarten to 12th grade, and I'm impressed. And the board would like to thank all of them. It's really nice. It was.
Good job, all.
Okay. 4.4B Financial Director's Report, Mr. Grill.
Right. Well, today is my day of bringing you lots of paper. All of you have an adopted budget, assuming that you adopt the budget tonight. At the end of the meeting, there are, there's a handout for you, and it has three resolutions on it. One is to adopt and appropriate the budget. The other is to categorize and impose the tax. So that is one of the handouts that you have. The other thing that you have in your packet is a resolution which amends and transfers the current year budget. We do this about almost every year now, last few years. This year, we need to identify and appropriate extra revenue that we received from the state school fund due to the higher-than-anticipated enrollment. So that's what we do with that particular resolution. I believe that one is 10B. Your traditional budget adoption resolution is 10. There's also a little sheet there that I handed out. I don't know if it got to you yet, but it's a sheet that just kind of makes it easier. I know that there's a lot of words and ways you have to kind of legally say certain things in certain resolutions. But there's a sheet there that has like a little cheat sheet of ways of passing all of those resolutions appropriately. I will be here all night, so if there's any questions, don't hesitate to ask. We'll make sure that you get covered. Also, those resolutions are kind of complex, so if you have any questions about those, I'm available for that now or later on this evening. Or if you ever have any questions at all about the finances or moving of money and what it's doing and why we're doing it, I'm always available. The last part of my financial report kind of just dovetails on what Mr. Grill said. Right now, if we do not receive a budget from the state by June 25th, we have, we're under the understanding that the Department of Administrative Services is allowing ODE to, as well as other departments, to pass a continuing resolution. And that will keep some level of funding going on for up to three months, with the hope, obviously, that the House and Senate gets together again in emergency session and passes a real budget. And so that's the kind of situation we're in. There's a little bit of argument about that continuing resolution and the amount of that continuing resolution. And for schools, they're going to, there's some discussion about, you know, looking back on a quarter and matching that, and it's going to be a 9.9, it's going to be a 10.2. All of that to say is that there's a decent chance, if we do go down that continuing resolution level route, that the amount of money that we receive is not going to be as much as we would traditionally receive as a school district. Remember, we get two payments in July. We get one in August, one in September, so that's four payments, you know, in the first part of the new fiscal year. And they're talking about doing one and a half to maybe two payments in replacement of that, if that continuing resolution is our main source. If that were to happen, because we are, we, we work very hard to preserve cash around here, because Mr. Grill and I have been doing this for a while, and I love money state a lot, but we do some crazy stuff bunch of lives. And so we like to kind of have our cash and manage it well just for emergencies such as this. So we are ready to go if that resolution came in and we were going to be in low funding. If that was the case, if that were the case, we'd obviously have board meetings that'll keep you apprised as to how we're directly facilitating, you know, keeping schools open. We're in very good shape, though, financially. The financial report, which is attached in your packet, shows a healthy ending fund balance. We're just going to kind of keep on to that, keep watching. Are there any questions? Anyway, thank you very much for all the work you do all year round. If there's questions at all about those resolutions, please just let me know.
Okay. Thank you. 4C High School Principals Report, Mr. Rasmussen.
Thank you personally for attending the graduation. Good to see you all there. It was a great night. Appreciate that. I don't take a lot of time tonight. The one thing I do want to highlight is the amount of work and different things that are going on in school. I made a list of just, just a few things that we do with kids on the board report, and it's remarkable when I stop back and look at all the things we're doing with kids, all places are going. It's crazy. I do want to tell you a quick story. I've told a few people this, so, and danger repeating myself anyway. But the other day, Tony Melissa was out in the parking lot, and we had, John Iverson had an elementary group from one of our elementaries working with some kids. Some middle school kids came riding up on their bikes that, it's Iverson, the group just. And they were taking them back to the thing. Some high school kids were carrying over their recently cut-out CNC Steelhead. These pictures of the beautiful Steelhead. And a person who was not known at their school, he went, "What kind of school is this? Is this a special school?" And if I would have been there, I would have said, "Heck, yeah, it is." I mean, it's amazing. Because when this person walks on campus, see all this unique activity, and they don't see a normal high school. So it was really cool to see all that stuff happening here, all the things that are distributed in elementary through high school. It was just a really cool little story, and I think it's indicative of what we're doing here. All those things I listed there are just pieces of efforts of multiple people trying to do great things with it, so, things really great. Any questions?
Going above and beyond, you said that Mr. Iverson was getting at the backspace blacksmithing. Is that, got a grant?
Yep.
Is that for him to learn how and then teach it?
I don't know. He knows something, but he's going to have a forge there, and they're going to be like
That is awesome.
different stuff. I don't know. You've watched Forge of Fire, the occasional episode or whatever, so it's happening. Eighteen thousand bucks to get a forge, so he's got a place all figured out, so who knows? I don't know.
I know people that are going to want to come back to high school just to do stuff like that.
Absolutely. I mean, absolutely. It just keeps growing out there. And Mrs. Cox is going to be using her money for a table. There's rollout, digital sheet you put on a desk, and you point at things and it lights up and it shows you different parts of the anatomy of the body, and there's tablets that go with it and interacts with this. And the cool thing about a lot of these tables are massive. They're, Mr. Grill's seen them at these shows. But this one is some kind of a mat that rolls up and can cover an English surface, so it's much more portable. It doesn't take up mass amounts of storage space. So, yeah, she's excited about that, so. And they, they went through, MX has been a great partner, Middlelamon Education Resort Show. They have grants to fly for all the time. They applied. We didn't want to have one other teacher didn't get theirs, but he got a big giant tractor this year, so nobody's going too bad.
Oh, okay. And then your proposal?
Yeah, we brought that, we brought it to you last time, and without any further consternation or concerns about that, we are going to add it to our student handbook in the fall, asking, once again, asking seniors to show up to school better than 92% of the time. And if they don't, they'll have to appeal, otherwise they won't walk at graduation.
Got it.
Did we have anybody that appealed this year?
We, we didn't have a policy.
We didn't. No, it wasn't an option. They either made it or they didn't.
Yeah, yeah. And our attendance, it's either, it's either most of the kids are fully on, or it's the handful of kids who aren't on. They're just struggling. As long as they get, long as they get their stuff done, it's just they're not getting the full experience of your category.
I have a question. How many did not graduate at the end?
Very few. The ones who didn't graduate, we knew about a long time ago.
Okay.
Two of them were fifth-year seniors, and they were here on this campus again, trying to support them as much as we can. Our, our graduation rate is going to be excellent. It will be about 90. I don't believe that.
Okay, but less than five, it sounds like. Less than five?
Well, when you finally get that final state report, you go, "Oh, that kid in sophomore year left, and they never enrolled," and they're like one of ours. So until you see the final state report, there's always a few, yes, I'm counting in five-ish, it's all the same. But the district and Mrs. Thompson's done an amazing job at OC, too, so her rates, her rates, one of the best, if not the best, all school in the area as well, so. We, we work hard and a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen. 4D, Junior High Principal's Report, Mr. Grill.
Good evening. I'll keep mine short and sweet because Mrs. Grill is going to brag about the junior high some, but a couple of things. We had our eighth-grade dance the other night, and we held it outside, which was our first time in our courtyard. Our nurses in their DIY club, the Do It Yourself, helped out with the strategic social responsibility, and it was a great location. We'd never done it, and it made it nice because the parents were able to come set up instead of waiting for all the classes to leave after school. So that was, it was fun and it closed, and kids couldn't run around playing tag, which was great. So, you know, it was a win-win. We opened up so kids could play board games if they weren't quite into the dance motif part. So it was a new experience, and I think we'll definitely, if the weather, you know, holds in the future, we'll try and stay out in that location. I just did a quick tally on our sports and clubs and activities. We have 12 after-school booths that kids were able to participate and eight different lunchtime activities that kids did. So when we took the poll, and only half the kids participated, but, you know, it's junior high. Ninety-seven percent said they at least did something. So we're engaging and participating, and I think that was the one thing that I noticed at graduation, is that the one kiddos spoke about, you know, being involved and getting to know people, you know, and participating, not just kind of being there and not really investing in your, their experience. So I thought that, you know, and 97% of our kids are doing something that maybe they're not comfortable with, and I thought that was great. And the only thing that I left off that I should have put on there is that we had our retirement for these for Mrs. Cobrely and Mrs. Dennis. Cobrely is leaving us with 32 years of experience, and Mrs. Dennis with 29 years' experience. And while, yeah, phenomenal, truly phenomenal. And while we replace them, I don't think you can fill that hole, so those are huge shoes to fill. So, you know, I wish them well in their future endeavors, but wow, you know, those are going to be some holes that are definitely not the same. I think I, since I started at Cascade, Mrs. Cobrely has been in that room ever since, so, yeah. She's going to be a, she gave some words of wisdom, and I thought she was, you know, right on, you know, that she wanted our people, you know, if you're teaching, you know, make sure you love what you're doing and that the kids know you love it, because you chose this, you know, side of profession, whatever content area, because you love it, so make sure they get that. I love it, too. I thought that was a great tidbit to pass along to our new kiddos, so. Any questions?
I had some questions on numbers promoting and numbers going into summer school, but is that something that you're going to cover? Okay.
So we're down to the wire. They had till today to turn stuff in. Right now, I have about 38 that are still scrambling, but they were supposed to get it in today. I told teachers they have tomorrow to read. But kids are, for the most part, making their way up and over. I think we'll have it in the 20s or so, the kids that did not make it across the stage. And it's not without lack of effort on staff or students or parents, so, yeah.
And then will those 20, then, will that number be the number that's heading to summer school?
Maybe, yes, summer school, yes. And most are only down one or two classes, so it's not as.
Okay. And is that still a four-week program?
No, it's pretty well the eight days as soon as school's out. They'll go from eight in the morning till noon. And I have three different teachers that are offering to, you know, break that group into smaller groups. I think six or seven in a group instead of all 20 in one room is probably not the best learning environment in that given situation, so. And then if they don't finish in the eight days, then they'll have July to work on it on their own, which we all know that they won't do very much at that point. And so in August, when I come back, I'll start making phone calls, and, "Hey, this is the day is going to be here. Why don't you come and be my buddy?" So, for one. And most of them will then.
So, so what do they do during those eight, first eight days?
We have an online curriculum that, instead of teachers providing and having to correct, it's an online curriculum that we use during COVID. It's not great, but it's at least that they're having to do something.
So it's a curriculum designed for kids that don't make the grade, if you will, and have to
Yeah.
and have to do a fast track to get those credits essentially?
Yeah, we tried to find content that's comparable to what they would have been studying in class, and so at least it's another 20 to 30 assignments and tests that they, you're going to have to make it through before you get to move on to high school.
So how many hours does that eight days, you said it's four hours, so they're getting whatever that is? And how many hours in a, in a trimester does a student get in any given class? You know, I don't know how many, what is the class, 45 minutes?
Uh, 60.
60 minutes?
60, and it's about 50 days.
Okay, so it's a very condensed version of that, but it's enough to get them the credits to check the box.
And it's more of holding them accountable, you know, and I think we're one of the few districts in the state that holds eighth-years accountable. I have one that just came from Salem Kaiser, and we're holding him accountable. Buddy, you know, you didn't pass this last term, but, um. So guess what? You get summer school. He's like, "What? We didn't have this in Salem?" Oh, that's why you're with us.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll be good for them, but, yeah. And if we hold them accountable now, when they get to Mr. Rasmussen, then it's, you know, we're starting to learn.
Right, okay.
A lot of panicking kids are, let me tell you, over the weekend. I think a lot of people, I had Dad come in. We got 14 assignments over the weekend. Well, good job, Dad. I think you worked hard.
Well, yeah, exactly. Yeah, wow.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. 4E Junior High Principals Report, Mr. Grill.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hello. I think you have, I probably have my report in front of you. I just wanted to go over a couple of things. I've worn a couple of different hats this year, I think, as everybody does in admin, and so I just kind of wanted to highlight a couple of the ones. Mr. Nolan, when he was here last week, or last month, talked about our discipline numbers, so I thought I'd talk about some of the positive things. So at the beginning of the year, we put in what we call the PR program, so it's positive referrals, and teachers could use. Carol De La Martyr helped us set it up, so in our discipline folder for our Tyler Sis, teachers could put in a positive referral right there, and then those can't come to us. We make a little postcard, we send one home, we give it to the kids, and give them some candy and tell them what a great job they've done. This has been really great. One, I think I've had two parents cry on the phone after them, because they've been so excited to have some positive reinforcement from, you know, from the school. We're not calling, you know, although, you know, when they first, you say, "Hey, let's small gay lead vice principal," and they're like, "Yes." And I was like, "No, no, this is good." And so that's been really great. We've, I think I've been here like 287 or so students that got the actual, you know, piece of paper from us, and so that's been, that's been a great program. We also, at the beginning of the year, started our Tiger program, and we kind of, you know, T was treat others with kindness. Our R was about respect, and our E was effort. We ended with E for the year. We nominated, I want to say 50-ish types of students, so each teacher nominates one for the month, and we did that in front of a big pep assembly, and the kids come out and then they play a game. And so just some more recognition for some kids, you know, all the kids that we know that are out there that we don't always recognize. And so that's been really great. Title, I gave you some numbers and stuff and some of the things we do with our title, have done with our title program. I have learned a ton in the two years that I've been doing it, but I'm not going to lie, I'm very excited to have turned over to Brian Dyer. Brian, will you take the reins a title? And one of the reasons I'm really excited is because I think it's going to be so great for the district. An opportunity for somebody to be able to kind of have this over umbrella look at what we can do with our title dollars, how we can tie it into other programs. A lot of times, I want to always know what the other programs are doing, because, you know, I'm at the junior high, being a vice principal. And so I'm really excited to see that move forward. Big kudos to our elementary schools, Omso and Turner. They've put a ton of books into kids' hands over this last year, and a lot of training has gone into their, to their reading and writing, and I just, it's been fun to watch, and so I've been really excited about that. The last thing is, I thought, well, I've been, we've also been working with the scheduling program, so I thought I'd give you a little update on that. I've been working with Brian Rose, our counselor, on our scheduling program, our new scheduling program, and it's been great. And I, the support that we've gotten, Carol has done a great job getting us hooked in with the company. We had this great training. We were able to sit with them for, gosh, I think she sat with us on Zoom for three days, as we went over everything. We're able to do a lot of things, getting kids into the right classes early on, and it's making the schedule for us. It's, it's getting kids into the classes that they need to. So, so far, knock on wood, it's been very positive, and so I just wanted to share that. Been a really great year, this next second year doing this. I did want to make a mention, and I'm sorry, I'm going to go completely off-topic here, but I also have another hat, which is the track and field coach, and I just wanted to mention that we had a really cool opportunity this year to take. They had a Paralympic section at the state track meet, and we took two of our athletes as paraathletes, and they competed at Hayward Stadium, and it was the coolest thing ever. We had a 1,500-meter runner. I have a video of him running down Hayward. The video Tron is in the background, and he's running on the track, and so it was just a really cool experience. And so I just wanted you to know that, you know, we're taking, when we took 21 kids to state, but also this opportunity for kids that maybe don't always get the opportunity, and OSA is supplying that, and it was really amazing. And hey, we're good to watch our, to watch our kiddos compete, so. That's my report. Is there any questions?
I don't think so. I think we're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
4F Cascade Opportunity Center Principal's Report, Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening, everybody, and I'm trying to do my best talking. I've never had seasonal allergies until this year. I don't know what's happening. But you have my report in front of you, so if there are any questions, I would love to try to answer them for you. Have a couple graphs on there, so.
Questions? Can, I'll ask you a question. On the virtual academy, it looks like we have 27 students enrolled on that. What is our, how long has that been going on, Mr. Grill?
We've had it for four.
Longer than life in there, so at least four years.
Four or five, that's what I'm thinking.
Six, seven years?
Yeah, yeah. What is our, what's our goal? What's our, what's the perfect number of students in that online academy, virtual academy?
Pre-COVID, it usually ran about 25 to 30, and that included some junior high. Those numbers were very low, about three or four. Then COVID hit, and it just exploded, and so now it's kind of coming down to about pre-COVID numbers. Junior high, we are working on getting those down to pre-COVID numbers as well, so I think we have that planned in place. So the goal for that, you know, virtual academy is just to provide some students with just an option to be able to deal with the things that they need to deal with and not lose the ability to keep up with their high school credits. And for the most part, they do. I don't allow students to continue on the virtual academy if they fall below the 92% attendance rate, and we have a certain way that we calculate that for online, or if they start failing classes. So right now, I've got all that may be three or four that are on track to finishing their classes. Otherwise, they don't get to continue, and there's a little bit of weeping and mashing of teeth that happens with that. But because we've been imposing that and really sticking with it, that's why we're having the success that we're having. And when I talk about students that are dealing with their things, I'm talking about maybe they lost a parent, a parent that passed away, and they're dealing with that. Maybe they've got some other mental health issues that they're dealing with and some extenuating circumstances. We've had students that have been diagnosed with cancer go on this plan or have some other significant health issues to where they physically cannot come to school. So those, you know, I'm not saying those are the majority, but we're trying to keep it really honed in so that students can be as successful as possible. It's not going to be an escape route to not deal with school issues.
Is there, is there a goal for numbers as far as students in there?
That's a good question. I'd like, I like it to be about 25 to. That's a good question. I'd like, I like it to be about twenty-five because I have CVA teachers that are, um, they work outside of the normal teaching staff. And so their hours are limited. They're between eighty and ten hours a week.
Okay.
So they all have full-time jobs themselves and this is kind of an extra.
Right. Okay, so we're right where we want to be at this point as far as personal perfect.
Yeah, and I'm really happy with the success rate of the CVA students. It was not that great the last couple of years because we really were loose on who got to attend online school because of COVID. But now that we're tightening that up, it's gotten a lot better.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just want to say thank you to a couple of people, especially like Tony, well, Lisa who comes up our CTE ninety-nine-eight grants. She's been very inclusive to our school and, um, helping us come up with programs so that students can stay engaged in school. And so I just wanted to highlight a couple of pictures. Um, I don't know if you've been on campus lately, but in the past, there's that field with a little kind of backstop and, um, baseball field that hasn't been used. But, um, we decided to do a walking track. And so it took some volunteers and some equipment. And I've got lots of pictures that this basically tells the story of that. It's a beautiful trail. Um, it's wheelchair accessible. And so I just want to invite anyone who wants to go on a quick little quarter-mile walk to do that. We now have a couple of benches along the trail, planning to add more, um, so if you need to take a break. Um, and then we are working on putting exercise equipment. And I haven't really looked at it. It was kind of, we kind of snagged it from the high school. So I thought it was going to be along the trail, but I think it's one, um, piece of equipment. But it's just to get people out exercising and doing some physical activity. Um, I think I'm supposed to be able to tap this, but maybe not. It's not, you know.
So are the gates unlocked then so you can get on campus?
The gates are usually locked, but you can park in the parking lot and just walk around the gate.
Okay.
Yeah, or do I do this?
And no dogs allowed, correct? Okay.
Well, you know, I'm not out there, but if you can, people, and maybe that's a good idea. A little doggy bag of things along the trail too. Um, and then because we got a, uh, reimbursable grant through ODE, we were able to develop a school garden. And so it was really great to have students go out and build some of the, uh, some of the garden beds. And, um, this person is a friend of mine who actually kind of runs that grant. And so I didn't know about it until after we got it. We came out and helped build. And then this is Mr. Thompson. He kind of does whatever asks you to do. So we had a lot of really great helpers and the students loved helping getting their hands dirty. And now if you look, we've got things actually growing. So I'm pretty, pretty excited about that because I am learning along with everybody else about gardening. Why does it? Some of the other things that we were able to, um, to build is a greenhouse. And so we were able to do some plant starts, some veggies and some flowers for the Turner community garden. So I got to take a whole bunch of starts over to the community garden just a couple of weeks ago. And then I've got another load it starts to take tomorrow. And so with some of the CTE money, we were able to also purchase a subcompact tractor, which I love. I call it tractor therapy. And so we've been, um, able to use that to move the dirt around. Too much, you know, labor on that. And it's really helped us maintain the trail and it's going to help us to do a whole bunch of other things. One of our big projects to use to make, to kind of get that little, little league deal ready for little league to use. Um, and so that's in the works as well. So I just, the hope is that not just students get to use it, but the community can use it as well. And there's kind of a big shot of area. So you can see the greenhouse there. We've got a little bit more work to do, but I just love this view because it's a nice shot of the work that students and volunteers have been able to do. And I'm just hopeful for the future. I, I just have a lot of hope for lots of other things to do. Um, there was one more slide on there. And what that is, is we, you guys already kind of are familiar with the students that we work with. A lot of our students just really need a lot of support in getting their high school credits. We had a great celebration this year. It was really great to celebrate with them. I think one of the pictures was our graduation dinner that the Turnaround Cafe opens up their cafe for us in the evening and we just have a really great time celebrating. And we do have a pretty good graduation rate as far as standalone alternative schools are in the, in the state. Um, so, you know, even options in Albany, they have like a forty-something, five-year completion rate. And ours is in the sixty, mid-sixties, upper sixties. And so really proud of the effort that the staff and the students do in order to graduate. Their high school diploma from Cascade is a really, really important thing to them and they work hard to get that. And, um, so, but what happens, because a lot of times they don't have parents to kind of keep them going as far as need to get your schoolwork done or whatever. And we become kind of that voice where before, you know, before too long, it becomes a blah, 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 blah kind of thing. So what I wanted to propose is a champions program for next year. And there's a saying that, that goes, um, like every child needs a champion. And so what I would like to invite everyone to consider is to partner with us in kind of adopting a student. So consider that, and it's not, uh, a big commitment. It's just a matter of just checking in with them. You could come in and visit with them, sit while they do their work for a little bit, just to get to know them. And I'm inviting the district office staff as well as school board and anybody else who'd like to kind of adopt a student. And it's no pressure or anything like that. But, um, we work very hard with our students. And, um, sometimes I think they feel a little bit isolated, a little bit like we're out there in the middle of nowhere with our garden. So it's just really nice to be thought of outside of that as well. And so if you guys want to think about it over the summer, I'll give out more information as the fall comes around. And just would like to invite anyone to consider adopting a student. And again, it's kind of just a mentoring, just to check in, just to kind of see what their needs are. We've got a lot of resources in the district, but it's also nice to be able to say, hey, you know, I'm so-and-so. This is what I do and I care about you. So, um, just like to invite you guys to adopt that. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Elementary principals reports. Mr. Minter.
Good evening. I have to remind myself multiple times to say good evening and not good morning because that gets stuck in your head. So good evening. Good morning. My report is in front of you hopefully. Um, I noticed as I looked back at all of my reports over the years, um, over this year, excuse me, I throw a lot of chuds at you. So, um, I don't know, I, sorry, not sorry maybe is the thing, but I love sharing the data with you. So, um, one thing I did share with you today is the, our math data. And it, it shows us school-wide and it shows it from the beginning of the year, middle of the year and the end of the year. Almsville and the rest of the district really knocked it out of the park with math. Um, after talking with Brian and Lisa, we're seeing similar gains in all elementary schools. And, and that's really attributed to, number one, we adopted a new curriculum. We spent time, energy and effort on implementing correctly. We hired instructional coaches to help with that implementation. And we, and we developed interventionists to meet with kids who were below grade level. So we saw some of our most significant gains with kids below grade level, reaching and stretching and making that stretch growth, we call it, um, to be closer to or at grade level. So big celebration for us at elementary levels surrounding that. Any questions about math?
No, it's okay.
And I wanted, I was really hoping it would timeout right to get some reading data for you. But we just finished up benchmarking last week and I just sat down today to start teasing some of that stuff out. So hopefully, uh, my first report in September, we can share some of that information with you guys. I mentioned summer programming. We are back to, um, what we've kind of traditionally done before COVID, which was Kinder Jump Start and Migrant. So Kinder Jump Start is a program. Um, we get funded through a grant. We're allowed to, um, essentially invite thirty so or so kids who are going to start kindergarten that fall to come in for a couple of weeks, four-day weeks and just learn how to do school. It's been super successful. We've got two very dedicated staff members who, um, take that on and do an amazing job with that. Running parallel to that at the same time is our migrant ed program. And that serves kids from kindergarten all the way to eleventh grade. Um, this year, we're still teasing the details out, but it's super, super exciting. Um, there's some funding through the WASD and they're wanting to bring, um, ninth grade, tenth grade and eleventh grade on a trip to DC in August. So, um, we're hopeful to bring that to you at the July board meeting. But like I said, they're teasing out details with that. Right now it looks like around nine to ten students, um, migrant students who would be going with one of our chaperones and then a few migrant students from surrounding areas. So super exciting. It's with the organization called Close Up and they take care of everything. They'll even tie your shoes for you in the morning, I think, if you ask them. So pretty, pretty exciting stuff. Like I said, we'll bring that to you in July. The last thing I wanted to mention is, you know, tonight, every night we get up here, it's school, uh, different schools are up here and they share the amazing connections and partnerships that we have with each other. And I also wanted to be known that we have those partnerships because they're amazing. But also on the other side of that, we have partnerships with our towns and our communities. And I know Turner has a great relationship with their city. We have a great relationship with Almsville. And this last week, we had a bike rodeo. All of Almsville Police Department was out there with us. The older kids went on a bike ride through town. Later that day, some kids who, um, who earned the most money on their move-athon went, walked down to the fire station to have lunch with the fire chief and the rest of the staff there. And then fifth grade also went and visited, um, Ted Shepherd at the Almsville Historical Society and did a, a field trip there and then stopped by City Hall on the way back. So just amazing connections we have just with each other is fantastic, but also with our community. I think that is another piece of what makes us so special. So any questions about anything?
My grandson was pretty impressed with the museum because nobody in the family really knew it was there.
It's, it's pretty crazy.
Yeah.
All the things that he has in there.
Yeah, I mean, he's a amazing person.
Anytime I need, I'm like, hey, I'm a little, little foggy on this. He knows it right off. Or like, hey, I need some pictures of this. He has it like the next day. So.
Yeah.
Super great to have that resource.
So.
I'll ask you a question. So on this, on the graph that you did here, the beginning, middle and end of year. And it says this is, um, you have provided school-wide data for math. What do we do with that? Do we, do we definitively make changes to how we teach math based on these scores? What, what, what do you do with this data once you have it?
Great question. I think number one, what we do, and this is a goal that we've said to you guys in the beginning of the years, the three elementary schools get together and we compare, we sit down. We say, is this looking similar? Are you seeing the same things? Yes or no? What's our plan as elementary in the district? That's number one. Number two, I think for us, it really, and I had this conversation with Brian already, it really shows how successful our intervention program has right now, or has been, excuse me. Right now we have a math coach, Katie Ranzoni, who does an amazing job. And she has two instructional assistants who work with her and they provide interventions in addition to normal math time. So my hope would be that in the future we can grow that because truly that's where we saw so much growth is kids below grade level moving toward grade level because of those intervention small groups.
So are we able to say, like, I don't know, do you do this every year?
Yes.
So could we say, hey, three years ago, our numbers were X. We made these changes and we can definitively see the different data based on those changes, good or bad?
Correct.
And be able to continue to?
That would be the hope. This is our second year doing it. So I'm really excited to see how things look in three, four years.
Thanks. Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. For that Family Resources Center Director, Miss Harman.
Hello, everyone. So good to see you all. I kind of miss you.
Yeah.
Just kind of. All right.
So you have my report and I just wanted to do a couple of highlights about it. So, um, but my first major announcement is that Family Building Locks is moving into the Family Resource Center tomorrow. And they are utilizing the rest of our building. So any open space, they, they're going to be renting it. And they are in zero-to-five program. And they have therapeutic classroom and they get family visits. And so it just kind of ties into our whole education. Content. So that's exciting.
And congratulations.
Um, it's, I believe it's a state, Ron.
Okay.
But I'm not positive.
It's big in San Antonio.
Right, yeah, right.
I, you know, Cheryl has no idea I'm going to say this, but she's, she connected with them. They had conversations with each other. Um, the last couple of years, we had people in that building. Um, as we were trying to navigate COVID and everything else, I said, Cheryl, please just take care of this contract. I'll look it over when you're ready to judge. And she came to me and said, four or five months ago, hey, I think they can come in. Um, I need to build this contract. Are you? I'm like, yes, please go. So all of her skills came to fruition here and, and, uh, we locked up family building blocks to use that space. We've got students in there, which if you guys, some of you guys remember, that building was designed for early childhood. So, um, excited to do that. Cheryl is taking care of everything. So we're appreciating that.
That's awesome.
And so they do infants and toddlers. And so they will have Mondays and Wednesdays, they have one group and then there's a different group. I haven't gotten all the details yet, but we're going to hash that out tomorrow.
And they supply all the equipment that they need and everything like that. You don't have to go begin.
Yes.
Perfect. Awesome. Great. Congratulations.
And then I kind of wanted to highlight what, how our year is ending up with the Family Resource Center. So, um, we have impacted a hundred and three families and a hundred and thirty-one students as of June first. But just recently I've gotten about five more families and eight more kids. So we're making a difference. And, uh, we have some exciting things planned for next year. We're doing Back to School Resource Fair. And I'm working with Tony on a community employment expo. So we have about twenty-five people in who are hiring so that our community can come in. And it's similar to the current world that we do here. Um, and then Anne and I, Anne's been fantastic this year and she and I are actually doing a convention plan. So we want to not just address the students attendance, but the family. And, and see, we can make a difference in that, in that way. So that's what we're doing. And I have a couple of feel-good stories. So at Christmas time, we had a family of five. And Dad had just got the job. They were behind on their bills. He was a cancer survivor. And so they came to us and they asked for help for Christmas and a winter food basket. And we were able to get some of their utilities paid and we utilized his cancer survivor. There was a grant for that. So they got almost all their bills caught up. And, uh, they got Christmas. And in February, she stopped me out in the bus area and said, I just want to tell you, thanks to your help. We are all caught up and we are on track. And that was pretty exciting to hear.
That's great.
Um, and then another one, I got a, a message from a parent. And I'll just read it because it kind of explains everything. Um, thank you for wrapping your arms around our family. We've decided to go back to Idaho. Cascades will, this has been amazing and I greatly appreciate you and one with the rest of the CSD family. So they had moved in, we got them, you know, McKinney, Bento, the Avon. So we were able to get transportation for their kids and shoes and different things that they needed. And, but they, in the end, decided to go back to Idaho, but they were just blessed with what we were able to do for them.
Yeah. You're making a huge difference.
Yes, good job. So, anyone have any questions?
Start it.
I do. So, and Mr. Drew, maybe you can hop in on this. What, how do we fund the Family Resource Center?
So the Student Success Act that we get money from, right, helps to fund this process. So we work with Matt, worked with Don the year before, uh, we built the process and a number, number of other students.
So it's not like the, the students here were, were paid by the, per student, we get money from the state by the per student. This is a separate bucket.
Mr. Patrick comes in and talks about like our, uh, our math, our new math folks that come in and do those math coaches, right?
Right.
That's the same, this is the same bucket that funds.
Ah, okay.
So it, it takes care of Cheryl. Um, we have somebody that takes care of, you know, and as well as Catherine Rasmus, who go through that process, point over. Um, so we go through that process and say, how can we build, we build that so we can wrap, you know, our families around these families? One of the things that Cheryl and I had talked about a couple of years earlier was, you know, we get calls from, from principals or we get calls from the counseling office. And it's just, there are four or five families in every building that take up a lot of resources of time. And it's beyond what our counselors are trained to do, frankly. And so a lot of it has to do with how do you get those folks connected to resources and help in a way that Cheryl's been talking about. So this has been reworked up. Don has talked about it. The principals have talked about it. We've had lots of opportunities to figure out how to make that work. And, uh, this is really our first year to see how it works.
Right.
remodels. Uh, we've been able to bring people in. Cheryl's got a plan. And, uh, apparently she didn't want to work with me any longer, so she's come over there, took care of it.
Yeah.
No, it's been something that, you know, she's wanted to do for a long time. And.
No, it's been something that, you know, she's wanted to do for a long time and it's been fantastic. Right? I mean, the other pieces of having Katie Ranzoni and our other math coach and other things we've done with safety and things like that, those are important too, but. We have found over time, this is important. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, I mean, the whole point of this was to take that resource piece off of our counselors.
Right.
So that they can do more mental health.
Right, with the students.
And by having this, we're more in tune to resources and we're privileged the counselors. Don't necessarily know about.
Right.
Well, we're more specialized in that and we're able to help more families because we can refer them or.
So how do you see your program and the family building blocks working together?
Well, we do work together now.
Okay.
So, uh, we, it, it's gonna be interesting to see how that partnership develops.
Right.
To see how we can help them. But they've talked about putting in a clothing closet and, um, that would be something that we could also. Join into. Um, and they, they also do food items and so that's possible that we could share. Um, those kinds of things together.
Okay.
And to help more families.
And how much space do you take and how much are they taking?
We have two classrooms.
Okay.
And, and the office reception area that we remodeled. Um, they are taking, they'll be using the kitchen. There's a classroom behind the kitchen. There's an office and restrooms. There's another small storage utilized, that space that they can utilize. That they'll put their clothing and food in. And there's an office, another office, and they're using the, the last classroom that's closest to the playground.
So is there, is it like a, a wall between them or are you always all sharing a common space more or less and they have their part and you have yours?
Well, it's just a big long hallway.
It's a long, right, but it's open to both of you.
Yes.
Right. So it's a common area, a common hallway.
And we share with the buses and pork rinds too. So.
Okay.
Everyone gets access to the kitchen and they can reserve our, our classroom. Or our conference room. And, and they will be utilizing that at Family Building Blocks.
Right, okay.
And they're very excited to have a nice training space.
Nice, perfect.
And the kids will use the gym and all that.
Yes.
And we still have the playground that's behind, correct?
Yes. And they're gonna resurface that out there.
Okay.
For their kiddos.
Good, yeah. Your research package is pretty cool too. I saw some stuff in there. I went, I could do that. I could do that. That would help me. So.
You're doing the word search for it.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I did too.
I went through too and I went. Anyway, um, any other questions? Well, good job.
So and then do just a shout out to Anne. She's been really helpful in this whole process and, and working with Kathleen too. We're all just kind of, you know, coming together and. Doing what we can. And it's been amazing.
So you guys have done a great job.
Thank you.
For I, Food Service Director at Ford.
Hello again. Nice to see you guys. Been a while.
Yeah.
Like Marie, I am suffering from allergies for the first time. I was sick last week, but I'm not sick. It's allergies. So. I'm sorry if I sound sick though, not so. Um, so you guys have my report. I'm just gonna touch on some stuff and then feel free to ask me questions. Um, the biggest news I have probably is that we passed our lead four-year real straight review audit. Um, Darren, if I chime in, but, uh, basically flying colors, um, as opposed to the last time Cascade had an audit, 2017. Think the corrective action report actually got a copy of it. It was about 18 pages long. And it was a fiscal assessment against the district at that time. So. Huge improvement. So thank you to supportive district here and my staff. They just really pulled through and we did really awesome.
Sorry, so let me, let me, let me, uh, let me brush up on that. So I have been through four of these now, this position. And, um, you go, you sit at a table, you have folks come out from ODE, they go through food service. They know far more about. A process regarding the food service numbers, ratios, everything else. You never want to know. Your eyes gloss over quickly. Um, it is a difficult process. I walked into the room this time fully prepared for some sort of 10, 12, 18 page, four hour kind of. Thing. We were done in 25 minutes. They were gushing over our process, talking about how it is we should be to model. For other districts. And, uh, while they, they have to find something, right? They have to justify their job in some way. And the conversation went something like, well, we did kind of find something and, you know, but we cleared it up right then and there. There was no real. Throwing out any forms. I, you know, I was beginning to look around for the camera. I thought it would be punked. Um, and, uh, you know, Chris and Nicole, uh, just did an amazing job. They were. You know, practically it felt like we were ready to high five one another before we walked out of there. It was surreal, uh, compared to what we've done before. So. ODE is very, uh, was very happy about how we thought for the process. Uh, they did find one minor thing which.
They reduced application errors.
Yeah, exactly. Some sort of conversation that's, that food service only has with each other. And they were all done and taken care of. It was impressive. So, um, totally impressed, Chris, by how that got.
Yeah, I'm really, I'm just glad it's over. So it's a lot of pressure. There, there's two people here and they're looking through all of your mountains of paperwork and. They ask lots of questions. It's, it's.
They handle it well.
Uh, so that's done. Um, the second thing is we got a USA Equipment Grant through a competitive RFA process. I applied for it, got it. Um, so we're getting all four convection ovens here at the high school replaced. They're over 20 something years old. Darren said they were here before he was here.
More than 20, really?
Or whatever, yeah, something like that. And then we're gonna pay for it in the warm Almsville, as long as you guys know how it's grown over the years. Or our capacity with certain things in that kitchen. So that's, I'll pay for that too. So that's. Probably is there.
You got the grant. We don't know anything. There's no, we, we completely paid for it, pre-grant. So.
Yep. Um, so I said at the last board meeting, I bring new information to you about CEP, the eligibility provision. Um, so we currently have half of our schools in the district on that. So that allows all basically free meals at those sites. Turner, junior high and senior high. I remember telling you guys I was gonna reapply for CEP. I did. Um, got the results back. I put it in your packet. It was not good. Um, it actually showed the decline. And poverty levels through snap data, because that's the primary driver of the data that they use. And so not only would we have lost. Paid any additional sites, we would have actually lost Cloverdale. Um, so it's more advantageous to keep our. Existing CEP here, but because you can keep up the four year. So we're good until 2026, which is three sites for sure. But I told Darren, I'll just keep, it is a huge process to go through the application process. I'll just keep going to see if we can get anything on it. Something that I did not mention in my packet here that just happened at the end of last week. The feds have proposed a rule to lower the CEP participation threshold from 40% to 25%, which takes a lot more school districts and schools eligible for CEP. That went through the comment period. It's closed and the feds are evaluating it. I don't know what's gonna happen with that. Uh, good news is that last week, well, good news and bad news, the committee that oversees OD's budget, they did. Um, include the CEP incentive enhancement to fund. CEP at the 25% level in Oregon. So that means that our district is over the 25%. So that means that we would, it's a universal. So fingers crossed, um, you guys know about the legislative, we have to go right now. So that is stuck in that process right now. So as soon as OD's budget's passed. And then they find out what the feds are doing for sure, then we'll know. And that would be effective for the 24, 25.
24, 25.
That'd be huge.
It's too late pretty much for anything to happen for 23, 24.
Okay. That's amazing.
Yeah, that'd be.
It's good news. And if you guys talk to your representative or not, it makes a difference when you say something about this. Because I did, I emailed my center of my rep and I actually got responsible for it. Saying they, uh, supported OD's budget included. So, it does make a difference. So, so I could tell you about that. Um, the full Oregon Universal Meals Program that they were talking about, that just went away.
Yeah.
So the CEP incentive thing is about as close as we're probably gonna get in Oregon for a while, unless something major changes like a rush like. And then the federal bill has not moved forward at all. It's just stuck. Yeah, so.
So which, what schools do we currently have that are fully subsidized for their meals?
Almsville, uh, Cascade Opportunity Center and Cloverdale.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about like Almsville and versus a Turner. So Turner has to pay for their meals.
Yes.
How many lunches do we serve? I know there's different, um, student populations at each school, but. What percentage of students are getting the free lunch versus what percentage of students buy their lunch at Turner?
Well, I actually have that.
You understand what I'm asking there? Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, so, um. Are you concerned about a snapshot of this year or pre-COVID?
Right now.
Yeah. So for like May of, um, '23, uh, Turner had. Lunch is lunch.
Sure.
Free lunch, 1647. Uh, reduced 312, uh, paid 1864.
So what is that, what is that in a percentage to the student body? What I'm looking for is how many kids are taking advantage of the free lunch versus how many kids are buying their lunch at the other schools? You know, I mean, are, are we getting 90% of the kids are going in for a free lunch if it's handed to them?
Oh.
Versus 22% are buying here.
Something like that. I could get that. I could get that.
I'd just be curious to know what percent, you know, I mean, if, if, if the kids are getting a, a meal given to them. Or how many are taking advantage of that versus if they have to pay for it?
Tell you is the free reduce is obviously much higher.
Right.
Because even reduced Oregon's free because the state of Oregon picks up the, okay.
Okay.
So I do have those participation figures to that exact thing that you're talking about.
Okay.
That front of me.
Okay. Yeah, but that'd be interesting to see. I'm just curious on what, how many are taking advantage of that versus how many potentially would take advantage of it? If it were free to them all. Just trying to wrap my head around what that looks like at those two different schools, one being subsidized, one being not.
Tell you just, so Turner has 400 and some kids. You know, our lunch count is usually about 160.
Okay.
Almsville and Roma is 600. We easily feed over 400 and some.
Okay, well, that's, that's really what I'm looking for right there. Right, we're getting two thirds of them versus one third. Yeah, that are paying for it. Yeah.
True. And I actually brought a comparison for you because I knew you were gonna probably ask some questions about this. I want to let you know that before COVID, so in 2000, I pulled May of 2018 and, uh, Turner is actually up in lunches. By, even though it's paid, is up in lunches by 420 for COVID. And the junior high, high, it's up by 1,226. For COVID. So that's, that's good. That means that we're probably doing a better job of quality and selections. Even, even though they're paying for it. People are willing to pay because they're getting.
Right.
So they all agree with you.
Yeah, so they, I know they're not laughing at me, supporting me. So.
Right.
Yes, people are willing to pay if they are getting.
So at Almsville, you're doing 400 and how many meals? You said?
Four, 420.
Out of 600. The 180 that aren't getting that free meal, what are they doing for lunch?
Uh, those are a lot of brown baggers.
Okay, they're bringing their own lunches in, but everybody's either.
Yeah, a lot of it's parental choice. A lot.
Right, right.
Their lunch for their child and that's fine.
But there's nobody going.
Nobody.
Send lunch out.
No, and I wanted, I wanted to tell you guys something about that as well. Cause I, it was the school year. I get heard all sorts of. Comments about things. You know, this child went hungry. Why did this happen at this school this way? No child went hungry. Cascade schools. That's true. The Oregon lunch, I very clearly trained my staff on the Oregon lunch shaming law. You cannot deny a child for any reason. The first reimbursement, you cannot deny it. We did not deny it ultimately. What we did do is, and this is not the shaming law, it's not applied, it's seconds for alibi purchases.
Oh.
Cause you have to have cash on account for that.
Right.
That's.
That's what we did do. And so there was, I, I heard a lot of stuff. That's really what it's about.
Well, when they're saying their kid didn't get what they asked for, it's because they didn't get the seconds they went up to get.
Yep. So I heard a lot of stuff. I just want to clarify with you guys that no child in Cascade went hungry. As you can see in your board report, we have the meal charge debt to prove it.
Right.
16,000.
Again.
Which, um, Darren knows, Nicole and I work our butts off. Oh, sorry, I'm not supposed to say that. You're, we, it's really, it was really hard. Um, we've got called bill collectors, debt collectors, just for doing our job to try to. Keep the programs all that. So just, but you know, it's been difficult. That's what we have. It's very hard to get that down. It's less than other districts our size. And, and smaller. Districts that are smaller, that's have a, have a higher.
And that 16 is from beginning of this school year till now. And do you have a guess on which building racks up most of that?
Oh, yeah. As junior, juniors.
Junior, so, so this campus?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And I will say that there are administrators in this, in this meeting right now that also, you know. Get after, have conversations, make phone calls to families and parents, some of which are unable to pay. And then Chris and, and some of the administrators work out, hey, can we administratively add them? Which is a percentage of kids we can add to.
We talked about that.
You know, we're not gonna fix the debt from the past, but we can make it so that they don't have debt going forward. We have a few kids that know the system and they love to take food and they can rack up three, four, $500. Uh, in the process. I appreciate Pete. Debbie's working on it right now. If you leave 12th grade at Cascade, you need to pay off your bill. Or you can't walk to graduation. We obviously have some kids that couldn't afford it. You took care of that. And the senior parents and all my party paid, will pay for the. Debbie's working on that as well. We haven't pressured our elementaries as much at grade level, but there are ways to do that. Um, the downside is it's not a fun conversation to have.
Right. And luckily Darren, he has brought a more collaborative approach to this and involved me and others and stuff. And I really appreciate that. It's helped.
There are districts that is turned over to debt collectors. I, I, it's not.
Yeah.
Unless you guys tell me otherwise.
No.
Um, you know, we are prepared. Scott understands that, you know, we're gonna have to write this off and, uh, start over again next year. Certainly would be great if, uh, free lunches were.
Oh, yeah.
Chris also spent some time working on what it might cost. If you guys still want to talk about this at the beginning, you're subsidizing, subsidizing it. You're talking. Easily over a hundred thousand, so the $200,000 range to cover.
Yeah, breakfast, breakfast, I actually wrote that down here too. Breakfast is about 70,000, slightly less than what I told you last year. I did kind of a wise calculation. And then lunch is 162,000, so like almost about 230.
So when you say those numbers, those mean what? If you had to.
If we, if we did free lunch for everybody.
Here it is.
Yeah, basically.
An additional, not just, so would it, it doesn't include the monies we get for the fully subsidized Almsville? That's in addition to.
We would have to subsidize the junior, senior high.
Right.
That's all that needs to score. It's just the paid meals. Because what happens when, what happens when you do not charge for paid meals is then during COVID. Everybody eats. And so you have three, three to four times amount of paid people eating. And so then you have to basically. Triple, quadruple the loss because example, paid reimbursement of breakfast is 50 cents. Okay? Half pint of milk right now is 40 cents.
Yeah.
You have a piece of fruit to it, you are now in a negative and then you add the entree to it. You are really in the negative. And then you add labor to it. You are.
Right.
So it's this multiplication factor and it just. Yep. And which can lead me to my next conversation. I'm sorry, I'm probably the longest.
You are.
We're in no hurry.
Okay. We, uh, everybody talked about it. Uh, we proposed to raise paid meal prices by 20 cents and that's just to cover. Increases in labor and food. Food is continuing to skyrocket. It has slowed down a little bit. It's still going up a lot. As you guys know, districts in negotiations with the classified union, um, you know, we're expecting a decent. Cost increase there. So that's just to help pay for it. I actually did something Darren that you asked me to do for them. Um, I told you about that paid lunch equity requirement. And so that applies to Turner and your senior high here. So. Uh, the feds have this tool and I ran our stuff through the tool and the. Paid lunch equity, it means the difference between the free reimbursement rate and the paid reimbursement rate. So you're talking about the difference between four something and. 70, 8 cents or whatever, is 3.56. Um, if you take our school year, um. 22, 23 weighted average, we're at 3.41. So we're actually slightly below the paid lunch equity requirement. And so if we put up 20 cents, we'd be just above that. So we'd be on target to eat.
And every other year, we're required to bump that number up in treats.
Yeah, if you don't, you actually fall behind. And then you actually have a bigger hole to fill, which some districts got fallen under that.
What does that make lunch and breakfast then for the cost if we add?
The paid lunch equity requirement only applies to, uh, lunch.
So she's asking, you'd be adding 20 cents to the cost. What would your lunch, what would your lunch cost? So she's asking, you'd be adding twenty cents to the cost, what would your lunch, what would your lunch cost?
So, um, junior high highs currently three fifty, so I'd be three seventy, and then Turner's three ten, so I'd be three. So still a good deal for all the stuff you get, full solid bar.
Right, I'm, I'm, yeah.
How much, how much freedom or what are your options when it comes to buying food for the district? Are you limited in who you can order said food from? Are you told here's the list of vendors you can you can call on?
We do competitive procurement, uh, so like I've been up dairy, unquote, was just the word very good again.
Okay.
We're part of the Oregon Child Nutrition Coalition, which is the biggest school district to go off in the state. And that's Cisco. And I I think I told you guys, I switched from, or he knows. I switched from US Foods, Applegate Co-op to Cisco CNC, uh, just because I think they're a little better, and I have seen improvement in the food. I've seen improvement in service on time delivery. So, yeah, there's choices. Um, but you do have to conduct a competitive procurement.
Right.
And all the state federal rules and all that sort of stuff. Well, we're already part of a really large buying group. I think there was ninety some districts on the CNC.
Okay, and so what does that mean being part of that buying group?
Uh, you have access to, uh, prices that like you can't get. Or school and school products, you know, things that count in the program. You know, we're increasingly being scrutinized for, you know, more whole grains, less sodium, less fat, so.
Right.
You know, we have access to the products that we need that you can't even get at the store. But it's mainly about that purchasing power.
Right. Okay. Okay.
Example, we're out of, we just ran out of five from permit, uh, little portable trays. Um, I looked at the US Food Store just to go grab some. It was like seventy, it was eight dollar case. Well, Cisco, I can luckily get them in Wednesday. Those thirty seven dollar cases, same.
Oh, yeah.
So stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're doing everything we can. We always do competitive procurement and everything we can get.
So what is the cost on using those trays? It's a disposable tray. What's the cost on using those versus a reusable that we have to clean and?
We use reusable. I'm sorry, that's a bad example. We use reusable across pretty much the whole district.
Right.
Uh, the only disposal we use is like here at the junior high, kids that have to go back to their the other building.
Right.
So they don't come back, so we can't send real trays with them because they'll disappear.
And how and how much of that reusable items disappear on their own? How many forks walk off on you every year?
We don't, you, no disposable forks.
Okay.
Um, I will tell you that if we went to real pottery.
Yeah. I would say you're gonna be re.
You'd be spending way more.
Way more, yeah, yeah, okay.
Uh, so, but the trays, we use reusable across the whole district.
Just the big classic trays, yeah.
I think we use disposable like Cascade Off-Center, they don't have a dishwasher.
Oh, right, right.
A high school, we use disposable because back in the day, I was here obviously, but I heard that they used them for frisbees and anything else you think about in the parking lot.
Right.
So that's basically. So, but I was just sorry, I was.
No, that's okay.
I understand.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
And then, um. Do I need to talk about anything else, Darren?
Thank you, good man.
So what's the answer on the, uh, on the lunch issue? On the, um, on the paying versus going into debt versus collecting versus waiting for the state to decide if it's all free?
I, my rec, you've, obviously, I've told Darren this, I'm just gonna do as directed. So whatever he tells me to do and whatever you guys tell him to do, I'm gonna do.
But I wanted your opinion.
I I recommend you guys. I think we're doing okay. I think our budget is, we're not making money. We're more of a break even point, so we're not making money. So I think that we can kind of keep stuff as is. It allows us some latitude to invest them. You know, we have some equipment and stuff like that. We're continuing to try to replace and stuff like that. We go in the whole lot and.
Pre-COVID, we were subsidizing subsidizing the food service program by two hundred.
I thought it was a much bigger number than this one a lot.
Chris, even with this, is going to right, be right around the break even part, even with all the increased food costs and all the increase in play costs. Um, it's a, it's a tough question, you know, we've had this conversation before. You know, to make a decision to outright spend two hundred and fifty, two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, like that same with the increased costs of labor and food for next year is a tough decision. We can see approach kind of kicks the can down the road, I understand. But, um, we have done fairly well and, uh, we saw, um, at Turner and at Costco, getting the food, popping on a couple of times about it, uh, talking to the cooks more than anybody else here. And they're like, you know what? Hey, we are feeding kids. We have a low, we are getting some kids taking some food. We have, you know, sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars in debt. Uh, kids taking foods, but a lot of other kids, because you can solve a net headstone, the food's better, so kids are willing to pay.
And that's still a cheap, cheap price for lunch.
Three fifty-five, three seventy is a good deal.
Yeah, I mean, you guys, you guys probably have passed through lately.
Right. It's stupid, right? Right. And if we do nothing other than stay the course and ride off sixteen grand a year in unpaid debt.
We're in pretty good shape.
I agree.
With with waiting to see what we, what happens.
Right.
Right.
I do believe something's gonna happen, especially here in Oregon. I think something's gonna happen. We're fine. Haven't heard too much grumbling about paying for meals and there's stuff, right?
Yeah. They're just gonna hit again because we're gonna increase lunch by twenty cents.
Oregon Old City. It just makes it harder to break even.
It does.
So the other thing, wherever you guys. Means you have to increase by forty or fifty cents.
Right. Right, no, and I know, because I, my question was, what if we have an intent that explained it? So.
Thanks, man.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Yes, so I have one more request.
Cookies?
Oh. How many cookies with me? I should have brought some. Um, so National School Lunch Week is in October of every year. Um, last year, the School Boards Association put out a thing inviting school members coming to have lunch, eat the ladies be a part. So I was wondering if a couple of you at least would come in.
Yep.
Have lunch, see what we do, talk with the kitchen ladies, let them know how important they are, what they do for the kids and all that sort of stuff. I won't see you again until around, you know, that time, so that's pretty helpful.
Yes, could we get maybe a reminder in early October? That'd be fabulous.
Yeah, maybe you guys, Darren.
Yeah.
Show up and.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Love to.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Darren's actually in real.
Yeah.
Nice.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we need to open the budget hearing. It is what time is it? Eight seventeen?
Yes.
Presentation of the Cascade School District.
Much of, not much of a presentation, other than your adopted budget or the proposed adopted budget is is on your counter. It's the exact same budget that the Budget Committee approved. The next step, uh, after that is, um, it's actually a formal hearing, so if anybody in the audience has any comments verbally, uh, you have to receive those. You don't necessarily have to act on them, but you do have to listen to them. Uh, once that is concluded, you close the budget hearing, and that's all you have to do until it's option based.
Okay. All right. So do we have any comments about the budget at this point in time from anybody in the audience?
It's really good.
Budget discussion really.
It's really good.
Close it now? That's all we had to do?
Yeah, that's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
We're done.
That's great.
Budget hearing is closed. Okay. Pretty good.
Wow.
All right, all right, so we are moving on to discussion and communications personnel, new staff recommendations. This is Marco.
Make me come up here active now.
That's a tough act to follow, Don. Oh, wow.
Okay, so we do have some new staff that, uh, we're bringing to you tonight for approval. Um, Principal at Cloverdale is Julia Bradley. Um, she's actually home to us from Albany School District. And then we have some certified staff to bring to you, Grant Hendrick, PE health teacher for the high school. Shane Hendrick, PE TOSA teacher for the high school, and David Plotz, computer teacher for the junior high.
Question about the PE teacher, because we have one position open and they're sharing, we had two positions open, where were we at?
We had two positions open. Pete, do you wanna, can you fill in the blanks a little bit on that?
We have one PE position open. We're adding a position for.
Okay.
So looking at the need, it was more flexibility, we posted a PE health slash elective teacher.
Okay.
And we need two of them. You know, and we need people's strengths to find the best places to put them. And we really, it was a great pool of people. We picked the top three, and Debbie was in our two.
Okay.
Health teacher and, um, and that's great for. We have the possibility now, but honestly, we're really not adding any more PE classes, maybe maybe an elective here or there. We need a little bit of help, we have a teacher, we need study skills, support, electives. I can also do a little bit to go to. Correct, and also actually Mr. Gill's adding, well, part of the add is, uh, have, uh, council support. Um, we, we, I've asked for support, council forever, are truly person who we're in half time. Which is a situation, so we've been down, we're there. Um, we're at the size, we're, we're close to add a third counselor. Um, we're, we're at, you know, each council, it's like, it's like, it's a bunch of housework and that's a lot. So we're, we're getting close to annual holes. So this person can operate, it's council, council support, looking at five or fours, um, looking at other academic, um, needs. Such a base without question, successful.
And that Shane?
After that, and then we have.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, he's the one that's gonna be doing those.
TOSA.
For TOSA, that's what that means, okay. All right, so he kind of is gonna be able to move around and do different pieces of different things. Because he's a long term, we hired him this year for a long term.
Signed us and I'll do it, so we did it, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Don. Okay, seven B, Board Policy Updates, Second Reading and Adoption.
Yep, so the policy updates were there from last time, they changed, hoping we can go to into our regular policy process.
Seven C, Social Media Class Action Litigation, Mr. Gill.
So the board, uh, I hope that the board moves tonight, uh, to, uh, have us enter into a agreement with Keller-Rorbock, uh, law firm that has multiple locations across the nation. These are the folks that helped us deal with the dual litigation. Um, they are in the process of building a very large, uh, litigation against social media. So you've seen states and, uh, large school districts starting to have this conversation. Portland Public just joined, Seattle, Unified just joined. A number of us are having conversations, and so Pete and I had a conversation with the attorney that's dealing with, excuse me, the Oregon area. And, um, they would like for us to add on to that conversation, be a part of that class action lawsuit. Uh, not a day goes by where these guys aren't dealing with some sort of social media issue. Uh, lots of times it happens outside of, they're all not in their heads already. It happens outside of school, it gets brought to school, and these guys spend part of their day far more than they should dealing with whatever the fallout is. Not only do they deal with the kids, but particularly our younger parents that are digital natives, right? They're used to having that, they're involved as well. We've had parents get after other students online. We've had parents post things negatively about other students online. Um, we are, I think we as an education approximation are getting to the point where it's like this is hurtful. This is, um, causes all kinds of social emotional problems for kids. Um, somebody can, it was one thing when you were in school and somebody said something mean to you and they bullied you a little bit. It is something else for someone to post something and have four hundred people comment on it. And that has no doubt connected this idea that kids are, we're worried about kids with regard to suicide, social emotional health. Uh, there's just a lot of things, and our goal is to remind these giant companies that you should not prey on business school, frankly. So I'm curious about it. Um, I'm really interested in what that process would bring. Uh, like I said, they talked with Pete and I, Debbie was busy that day. I kind of checked in, I knew she was already busy, so I didn't ask her. Um, but I could ask any of these guys here, and I think it's important that we join this lawsuit. I think it's important. It has a lot to do with cigarettes back in the day, it has a lot to do last year with the dual process. Um, these companies and their algorithms prey on young kids. I'd like to find out where it goes. Obviously, as we get closer, I will keep you posted as to what happens.
So does this mean like it would be take their phones away from them when they leave school?
It means that we're not going after kids so much as the company that, you know, that runs TikTok, the company that deals with Meta, the company that deals with any, any Instagram, any of the things that they, we are having that from, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I I wanted to ask a question, raise a point at least. I, nobody in this room is more put off by social media than I am. Um, nobody is more supportive of the idea that social media has cost our families and our culture an unbelievable amount that, so for me, that's not even worth discussing. I, there's a principle at work here, though, that I, I want to be careful before I just sign off, because what we're saying is we're asserting normally in litigation that they've, that they violated a law, right? Um, and I'm all for ganging up on Facebook. Um, mentally, emotionally, I'm not sure that I'm literally all for ganging up on Facebook unless somebody can explain to me what it is that we're asserting they've done that's illegal. So at what point do we hear, how far do I have to go down this road supporting signing onto a lawsuit before I hear what violation it is that I'm actually accusing them of?
I, I, I understand. I, um, I'm very much a First Amendment proponent, opponent, you know, uh, by my conversation, uh, with myself about, about First Amendment and how that works. Going all the way back to my law school years, you know, is sacred to me, that the idea that one person could speak out, which is hard, that that one person be protected from a group, and the group has a majority, is almost contrary to what we do in school, where we pay the majority rule if we raise our hands, right? I, you know, that's a concept I truly believe in. That said, the social emotional toll, the fact that these companies know how to continue to get kids to come back to the social media through the ads, through the algorithm, and get them to continue to stay on the process is almost addictive, quite frankly.
Is that illegal? I'm, I'm right with you. I I do too, but are we asserting that that's illegal?
I don't think you have to be illegal to sue, though.
I, I, I'm, all I'm suggesting is I'm asserting that they know that they're, they are, they are connecting, uh, children under the age of eighteen, right, under the age of twenty-one. They're connecting them in a way that keeps them coming back for more, like like drugs, like cigarettes, you know, but the thing twenty years ago was cigarettes aren't harmful to kids, right? Because it's not nicotine, it's not addictive, and that company knew, those, those, those cigarette companies knew that, right? What we're saying is the algorithms of these large companies, though, based on what it is you pull up, right, continue to pull you into that process. You almost can't get away from it. Have you ever watched somebody with a phone and they scroll, they scroll, they swipe, they swipe, they swipe? And you can literally have kids in a room that don't say a word to each other, but they're all serious. What I'm saying is somehow that process, there is some sort of addictive quality to the process. I would like for them to stop preying on, I can't, can't stop and prey on young adults, but, uh, while we're here, while we're dealing with stuff, I want them to stop that. We have had, every one of these people here has had somebody walk through their door and say, we have to deal with this kid in a way that. And I hear you, it's, it's a, it's a tough balance for me, but, uh, I feel like I've tipped to the other side of this issue.
That, I would just like to say before we roll ahead for a vote. You people sitting out there, I have seen what social media has done to perfectly healthy kids. Um, and it, I think that is one of the worst things that's ever happened. And I think I would eventually support this, but I would have to understand what it, what dishonest thing we've, we're accusing them of doing. The fact that it's an addictive sort of concept is not enough for me to say that I'm ready to assert that they've done something horrible. So I'm very glad to be outvoted by my friends. It's a democracy, but just know that I support the cause. I'm just not ready to vote for it.
Darren, just, can I make a point of clarification here? One doesn't have to do something illegal to sue.
Darren, just can I make a point of clarification here? One doesn't have to do something illegal to sue. They don't have to have done anything illegal to be guilty or to be.
It's not a criminal.
This is not a criminal charge, right? This is civil. And so so I just wanna make it a point there, John. I mean, you've said. Illegal. I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page there.
Yep, I understand that. Thank you.
Anything else on that?
Do you have any concept of what you would do if we did win money out of the settlement?
I think one of the things that happens is, like, you know, we've settled the Juul. And there are two other large companies with regard to the vaping process. That allows us, we, I say we, the the states in general have settled. It appears that we will get some money from them once they finalize that. They have to finalize these other two defendants in that process. Once they get to that, then it'll save the cascade based on the size of how many people are joined, you're gonna get X amount of dollars. My hope would be that we would use that for education, we would use that for vape sensing, we would use that for.
Mental health.
Away, mental health in the process to be able to talk about that. In this situation, I can envision it's gonna probably be two or three years, right? I would envision the district getting money back, setting aside so you can talk to kids about, do you understand what that's doing to you? Right? So there's some education to the process. There's some, how do you get yourself away from it? A number of kids will come and say, I just can't stop myself from looking at this stuff, right? I can't get away from it. So how do you do that? What kind of programs? And maybe the state says, you know, we are going to make an administrative rule that. Cell phones can't be used, you know, can't agree through eighth grade, you know, during class time. We have rules that basically say that now. But these guys spend a lot of time talking to kids about phone use, what they can't can't do. It's a little bit different in the high school, right, where where he goes, not he, but the high school and the teachers, it's a little bit different. They can use it during passing time if kids are older. But there's still, there's still a lot of conversations to be had about what that does. And a lot of our staff think that, but it does take up their time, takes time away from what we're supposed to do.
And maybe it'll lead to a bigger discussion where they change their platforms to not target those people of those ages.
You know, the the goal would be education, the goal would be cessation, right? The goal would be, is there a way for us to change the rules and make it a little more palatable? We we say no cell phones. We will have parents come to this board meeting and say, how dare you take away, if that's how I connect with my child. I need to know that they're safe in life, involved in school shootings. How can you do that, right? Those are tough conversations to have. Right? But how do we find a way to find that balance? That's that's what I hope. That's why I.
Is it clear to the chair that I am supportive and I'm on the team? I don't have enough information yet to vote yes. That's clear. Thank you. Thank you.
There's a superintendent too.
Thank you.
Informational items, staff requirements.
Come on up.
So we do have retirement, Carol Claire, who will be leaving. And then we have a couple of resignations that have come in since the last board meeting. We have Dan Bowman, who has resigned and.
She's gone somewhere else, what, I remember?
She's pursuing a personal.
She's an amazing opportunity. She's vocalist, right? And she, she's young, and she's like, I gotta try this now. So he probably said it the best. He said to me, you know, we say this to our kids all the time, you know, so, so she's mean, so. We just didn't want her to serve her dream and.
So that's what I have for you to see.
Employee recognition.
So third trimester employee recognition is in front of you. You see the names there. We have not officially said that out loud. So you guys get to see it first. This also includes, you know, because the opportunity at Center is small. We do it once a year there, and Marie has selected her person as well. We will try to get that out the next couple of days. We're wanting to see that we continue to give those guys recognition. I sent a thank you card with your guys' name and my name on there.
Okay, OSDA Summer Board Conference.
So we know there is a fall conference, but there is also a summer board conference. If anybody's interested in going to the OSDA for training, please let them know.
It is August eleventh to thirteenth in Salem this year. Okay, period for public comments. We did not get any written forms or submissions for it, so we have no public comment at this time. But anybody up here that's public, you're all public, you can still make a comment if you have anything to say.
Okay, Tamara Nixon has been the most amazing person, and I'm so mad at Kathleen because she stole her from our. Building, but I just want to go on record to say, she has been like our disciplined person. And she has put up with Greg and I, asking a thousand and one questions, and it's just been amazing. We're gonna miss her so much. And so I just wanted to, I had that in my notes, and I just wanted to recognize Tamara and just what an amazing job she does at our school, and so.
Actually, so Margaret Anderson is retiring, and she has been a special education and.
Long time.
A long time, yeah. And so she's retired, and I have the opportunity to. I am so excited. I am so blessed, and I am, it doesn't go past me that I have taken this, a really important person. I've actually avoided the conversation.
Well, at least she's not very far away. So go visit, see, you know, see this guy. Okay. All right, so being no other public comment, I don't think. All right, we'll move into resolutions at this time. Resolution regarding new staff recommendations.
Be resolved Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the new administrative and certified staff as recommended by administration.
Second. Then moved and seconded to approve the new administrative and certified staff as recommended by administration. All those in favor, signify by a thing. Aye. Aye, opposing sign. Motion carries. Ten B, resolution regarding board policies, second reading.
Be it resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the second reading and adoption of the board policies listed below.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the second reading and adoption of board policies listed below. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Ten C, resolution regarding social media class action litigation, approval to move forward.
Be it resolved, the Cascade Board of Education moves to approve the proposed contract with Keller Rohrbach LLP and WE SD. For specified legal services, which include the pursuit of a lawsuit against specified social media companies, if appropriate. And number two, authorize the superintendent to serve as the client representative and primary decision maker. In connection with the anticipated litigation, including making decisions to settle or partly settle the litigation by the district. On terms the superintendent determines are in the district's best interest.
You've got movement executive. May I say something right here? There's also, you know, you have motion approved, motion denied, and there are three ways to solve that problem. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Move on? It has been moved and seconded to approve the proposed contract with Keller Rohrbach LLP and WE SD for specified legal services. Which include the pursuit of lawsuits against specified social media companies, if appropriate. And number two, authorize superintendent to serve as a client representative and primary decision maker. In connection with the anticipated litigation, including making decisions to settle or partly settle the litigation by the district. On terms that superintendent determines are in the best district's best interest. All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, say aye. Okay, do we need to specify who said what? Okay, all those in favor. Motion carries. Because of majority. Ten D, resolution approving amended appropriations of expenditures, not requiring a supplemental budget in the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget. Darren, you gotta read the whole thing.
Yeah, you do, just that. Everybody's on it tonight.
Okay, go forward, Aaron.
All right, I move to approve the amended appropriations of expenditures not requiring a supplemental budget in the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget.
A second motion.
It's been moved and approved. To amend the appropriations of expenditures not requiring a supplemental budget in the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget as presented. All those in favor, signify by a thing. Aye. Opposing sign, motion carries. Ten E. There are three resolutions in this one, so.
All right, I'm gonna crank out all three of them.
Perfect.
Do it.
Um, be resolved, the Cascade School District hereby adopts the budget for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four in the total of sixty million. Four hundred and ninety five thousand, six hundred and five. This budget is now on file at Cascade School District's fiscal office at. Ten two six six Marion Road Southeast, Turner, Oregon nine seven three nine two. Keep going on number two. All right, number two, be it resolved that the following ad, I don't know that word. Thank you. Property taxes are hereby imposed for tax year twenty three, twenty four upon the assessed value of all taxable property within the district. In the amount of four point six four oh five per thousand of assessed value. The permanent tax rate for general operations, number two, and the amount of one point one three nine two per thousand. One million, seven hundred eighty six thousand, nine hundred and ninety of assessed value for debt service for general obligation bonds. And number three, be it resolved that the taxes imposed are hereby categorized as presented for purposes of Article eleven, section eleven B.
There a second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Two, for the three resolutions can be passed by. Imposing tax, adopt and appropriate the budget, impose the tax, and categorize the tax. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposing sign, motion carries. That's it, that's all. Okay, perfect. Okay, so I think we're done. Future agenda items, number eleven. Is there any future agenda items that we need to discuss?
So we will come back to starting to have conversations with July about what you do with regard to a school bond. This is a conversation that's come up multiple times with some of you and many times with staff about what happens next. You all know that our current bond falls off in twenty twenty six is now twenty twenty three. So a sort of effort, conversation, a plan, moving forward. Why, for us to begin that conversation, start listening to people that, like, we got process, and come up with some sort of plan about how you want to. So July is always kind of that reset and reshuffle, make sure that we are on the right track. And then August, we really start to talk about goals. Any others that things that you'd like to have that in the process? I will also bring you updates with regards to negotiations. We're in the middle of that. We're hoping to get solved, settled by the end of June. Working with whole organizations in productive and positive fashion. You know, there there's differences between what people want and what we can afford. That's okay, that's happened before. And we'll work at that. Hopefully, get closer and get done for the next.
Thank you for working on the negotiations, though. Okay, being nothing else to do, we will adjourn the meeting at eight forty four.